Good evening, I'm calling, reconvening our meeting. Board of Supervisors, June 6th, and the first item we have is the public hearings. The first one on the agenda is the public hearing for local fireworks regulation. Do we have any?
Yeah, just give a very brief introduction. The Board of Supervisors reviewed a draft ordinance at your last meeting, made some recommended changes. Those changes were incorporated and the document was then advertised for a public hearing for this meeting. Advertisements were in the newspaper two consecutive weeks as required by Code Virginia, Section 1521427. And the document has been available for review at my office as well as on Board docs for a number of weeks now. So at this point, prior to adopting an ordinance, you must hold a public hearing. So with it being properly advertised, now would be appropriate time for you to hear from the public.
Thank you for that. Anyone in the courtroom wishing to speak, please make sure you give us your name and your district.
No.
Please.
Hi, Donna McCon, Jackson District. I just want to thank all of you for the work you've put into this fireworks ordinance. I did reread the revised copy from this past time, and I'm happy with everything in it. So I'm hoping you guys will pass it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Karen Hunt, and I live on View Town Road in Amesville. I want to thank the Board, and Mr. Curry, and Mr. Goff, and other members of the county who worked really hard to understand the urgency of our need for an ordinance so we didn't have a repeat of the problems that we had before. While it may not have, you know, every little thing that I thought was important in there, it is by and far away a really good, I think, protective measure for the county that still allows the latitude for people to be able to have, you know, Fourth of July, or to do, you know, whatever they're going to do with consumer fireworks. I would say that after you guys do what you need to do here tonight, we probably need to talk about how to improve the permit, but we'll save that for another time. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Anyone else on fireworks? All right, going to the Zoom world. Anyone on Zoom that would wish to speak about the fireworks, please do that by raising your hand, and we'll unmute you. Not seeing any hands on Zoom. We'll close the public hearing on the fireworks regulation and open it up to the Board for discussion.
Madam Chair, I would like to thank Ms. Hunt, Ms. McCon for their advocacy on behalf of the people who live in Amesville who were adversely affected by that fireworks club event. And I think we all can agree, we don't like to overregulate, but absent a noise ordinance in Rappahannock County, sometimes these one-offs are needed. And I think that this, thanks to the work of Mr. Curry, Mr. Goff, gets us where we need to go to prevent something like that from happening again. And I appreciate the comment that we may have to look at improving the actual permit itself. Just to move this forward, and for further discussion as needed, I'll put forward a motion to adopt the current version of this ordinance, which would amend Rappahannock County code to add Chapter 21 titled Fire Prevention as provided in our meeting packet.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I had an email, I had to look for it. It came in my personal email, so it's a county email. So sorry about that.
That's okay.
From Raymond Lor and his wife from Battle Mountain Road, which was the scene of the battle, as some thought it was. I still can't get over the fact that some fellow thought that Laurel Mills was being attacked. Anyway, they feel that the fee is substantial, and that the 45-day prior should be reduced to 30 days. I agree, a $500 fee sounds substantial, but I would hate to see us reduce the time. I think 45 days is probably, probably a pretty good number, because it's going to take a little while to work through the process.
The reason I recommended $500 is based on our experience with notices in the newspaper, which this requires is very typical, that they run $200 to $250 per week, and so I thought they should be paying for it.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Not much we can do about that, most of the paper wants to do something for free. Hello.
Well, I mean, I think to your point, Mr. Fraser, I had someone reach out to me about the fee also this afternoon, and I think it definitely needs to be sufficient to cover administrative and other county costs. But their concern was that 500 did sound like it could be punitive and like a high amount for folks that might be interested in doing this the right way. And I think when the town of Washington does them, do they pay for their notices in the paper, or do they just run it as a, as like an article?
With the town of Washington?
I know the town of Washington had a similar issue with fireworks, and the...
Is it outside the town limits?
No, I don't think they have an ordinance either. They went through reviewing what they want to do or not. I don't think they, I'm not sure who puts an ad in the paper, if anybody.
I know the clerk circulates it, and I'm not sure beyond that, but that $500 does almost seem to be like a punitive, a punitive quantity.
It's clear that the cost of that covers the two weeks of notices.
This falls back to where I don't like to see the average citizen pay for somebody else's.
I think it was $50 suggested in the document before. It was thought that it should include, that it should require a newspaper advertisement. That's why it was increased.
If we were to, if we were to take the current draft that's subject to tonight's public hearing and made an adjustment to the fee and/or the lead time on a permit submission, would we have to then come back again? Or would that, would that be headed in the right direction?
I think you can probably reduce the fee. Regarding the lead time, I would be worried that citizens who felt 45 days was fine.
Okay.
You're missing a group of people, perhaps.
We don't, I just don't want to ruin a void avenue.
What is that, Chair, Mr. Goff? I think...
Void Avenue.
No, we ran afoul of, yeah, it would be void avenue issue.
I don't think it would, I don't think that would happen.
In both cases.
Either, in either event, because the, you know, the advertisement said that, you know, the board is going to consider all those issues. And, you know, the fact that it said 45, maybe the ad was a little bit over specific, but let's take a look at the ad and see how it read.
It didn't read, it didn't have the money. It said, "Come look at the ordinance."
Says, "Come look at the ordinance if you're interested," and it doesn't say 45 days in the ad, so you can do it today.
Okay.
How about, I'm fine if you, if you feel just for citizen protection.
Yeah, well, we're not making any money on it. That's what somebody accused us of once before, and I don't see how we're making any money if that's what advertising costs are.
We're not. And we've got exceptions built in for typical fireworks holidays, and this certainly does not. I heard from a couple of constituents around the town, but in the county, who, you know, Fourth of July, et cetera, do fireworks, and that doesn't affect them.
We really wouldn't even be here tonight if it hadn't been for somebody that took advantage of the fact that we were pretty, you know, leisurely about permitting certain things.
Correct.
Well, and then the other thing I think to hit is that we've ensured that this won't affect any of the nonprofits or fire and rescue organizations that may put on the ballot.
They still need a permit, but nonprofits principally funded by the county do not have to pay the fee.
Okay.
Because it's kind of in one pocket, out the other sort of thing.
Correct. Any other discussions?
And I would just say the other thing I've heard from some folks is that, you know, we're a rural county, and a certain amount of noise is natural in the county, and people do want to be able to pop off a firework here or there.
Right.
This is not what we're trying to stop with this ordinance.
Right.
There's an important distinction there.
Very likely that those incidences, that I'm sure happen very infrequently, are done by people who are not pirateons, pyrotechnicians, and would never be eligible for a permit.
Correct. Those sorts of things are not what we're aiming to solve here.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
No, this is, have to be rolled.
It's got to be rolled, oh, because it's new.
But I just want to bring that last conversation to a point. There was a discussion as to the fee and to the 45 days, and whether you wanted to change either. The motion was to adopt the ordinance as it is in its current form, so if there's any changes, they need to be identified.
I think we leave it intact, in my view.
I think it's fine to leave it intact, but if we find any cost-saving measures, I think we should lower it.
Mr. Fraser? Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
And I also. All right.
Thank you again for your, your help.
Yes.
Thank you.
Public hearing, zoning ordinance amendment, limited golf driving ranges.
I'll go ahead and give an introduction, and then if there's any additional information from the Planning Commission, or Whitson, or Ms. Summers can provide that background. In 2018, some time ago now, the Board of Supervisors directed the Planning Commission to review the current zoning ordinance to consider where golf driving ranges were, where they should be permitted, whether the ordinance should include minimum standards, et cetera. That dialogue continued beyond 2018, and the action item remained on the Planning Commission's list of to-do items for a long time. Many things got taken care of since then, May amendments and many other things, and this just never managed to make it to the top of the list. I put forward a suggested draft to the Planning Commission that they reviewed and modified, and eventually the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the draft that's before you now, and which was advertised for this public hearing, this time pursuant to Code Virginia 1522204, because it's a zoning ordinance. What it does, this ordinance does, is it creates a new use in your use table for limited golf driving range. And so that is distinct from a normal golf driving range, which for whatever reason is combined with go-kart or similar outdoor commercial recreation. And this use is only permitted in the agricultural or zoning district, and it's permitted only through a special exception. In addition, there are several additional standards that go along with it. Basically, not allowing any lighting, fixed or portable, not allowing any containment netting or barriers, not allowing any structures be constructed that exceed 10 feet in height above the ground surface or exceed 1,200 square feet in area, not allowing, or fixing users to no more than one concurrent user per acre based on the parcel size, with a maximum of 35 users, a minimum lot size of 25 acres, sale of food and provision of commercial entertainment are prohibited in association with the use, and amplified sounds are prohibited in association with the use. So this ordinance was reviewed and put to public hearing by the Planning Commission. They moved it forward with a five-to-one vote to the Board of Supervisors recommending that the Board approve it. Before that approval could be, can take place, you will have to hear from the public as well, which is a noted properly advertised to do so tonight.
As a point of clarification, what is substantially different from this than the last time the Board of Supervisors said that we didn't want to amend the ordinance in this fashion piecemeal?
Now, this came forward in the past, is a, there was a request from the property owner to make a change, was recommended at that time that it not be done, and that is when you kicked it back to the Planning Commission to work on it. So this is the work product coming back from the Planning Commission, subject to the request from the Board.
And one thing, one thing I would add, it seemed that in the Planning Commission deliberations, which spanned at least a couple meetings, possibly three, and Mr. Curry just enumerated the various conditions, restrictions that would be embedded in the ordinance itself. I think over the course of those meetings, certain members of Planning Commission lost track of the fact that what we were talking about is actually, as Mr. Curry articulated, it's a new use in 170-36 in our use table for very limited golf driving ranges and egg zone, which would still require a special exception permit. So it's important, I think, that we all, as we consider this for adoption, that we keep in mind that if someone then decided that they wanted to invoke this new provision in the use table, that they would still have to pursue a special exception permit, which would require Planning Commission review and Board of Supervisors review, and likely would involve the application of other conditions on that permit. So it's already extremely restrictive in ordinance form, and it's just important to remember that we're talking about not granting a permit here, but simply adding a use to the use table that would then allow someone to come in and seek a permit, so.
I understand that there's no application in front of us.
Right.
For the zoning ordinance amendment, but I'm just wondering now, with this 25-acre minimum, if there was already something happening on that same property that was a conditional use? Would you not consider that you have more than one permitted use you're using the same required acreage for? This doesn't, doesn't address that, that I can see.
I don't think it does contemplate whether you can have overlapping uses. Your ordinance in general does not consider.
We do that with, with anything that uses tourist overnight stays. You count like number of bedrooms or number of occupancies. You can't have, you can't have combining uses there. I'm just wondering if you have...
I'm not sure how you've applied that in the past.
I'm sorry?
So I'm not sure how you have applied that in the past. I can understand how you have a use that cuts off at a certain number of rooms that you couldn't subvert the ordinance by doing two of them on one parcel, I think is what you're suggesting.
Yeah, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have, you know, two different applications on the same property where you're counting the same number of acres or bedrooms or whatever twice. So here, here if they had something that they needed 25 acres, or 10 acres even, if they needed 10 acres for something, and here they needed 25 acres to do this, and it's a 25-acre parcel, would we be allowing something even though 10 acres is already obligated?
Well, I think in that case, the Board would be able to review those uses to see if they could be, they could function concurrently or not. And so in the case of a golf driving range, there are certain areas that are maybe buffer and away from the impact area, why you would want to have extra space, and it might or might not be appropriate, and that would be the process you'd go through, a special exception to determine in that particular case whether it made sense.
The key point being open space for hitting golf balls.
Right. So if they want to hit golf balls into their use, then they have to convince the Board why that's okay.
All right, if the Board is, all right, we're going to go into the public hearing, opening it for zoning ordinance amendment, limited golf driving ranges. Anybody wishing to comment, please come up and give us your name and district.
People are lined up outside on this one.
Anyone, driving ranges. Not seeing anyone in the courtroom, anybody online? All righty, not seeing anyone online. We can close the public hearing and open it to the Board.
Madam Chair, I'll just try to move this along. I'll put forward a motion that we adopt the provided ordinance amendment that adds a new quote, "limited golf driving range" unquote, "use" to the zoning ordinance, and I believe it would be in Section 170-36, our use table, with just the additional explanation that, in my view, this is about as minimalist as one can be on an agricultural property. And I think the ultimate intent here is that the use easily could revert back to a traditional agricultural use with little or no effort, because there's no infrastructure allowed in a driving range of this form, so.
So just to clarify, there was moving approval of the ordinance that's provided?
Yes.
You might have a lot of golf acres on your property.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second, discussion?
Well, I guess if no one else is going to tee off, I guess I will. So I had reviewed this yesterday under the light of, or in the light of our comprehensive plan that we adopted in December of 2020, and I had a few questions. And I'm, I'm not sure how we bridge the differences between what's brought to us for adoption this evening and what we said in the comprehensive plan. And I should say, I do thank the Planning Commission very much for their diligent work as our advisory committee. I do think that is important work for us, for them to bring us the best possible option. But it is ultimately up to us to decide whether it's a suitable fit for the county or not. In terms of crafting the ordinance, I think they've done a good job, but I'm just not convinced it's the right fit for the county. If you look at the way the farmland has been decreasing over the years, we lose about 1,000 acres of agricultural land every year, and I'm just not sure that creating an additional use is a smart idea when we already have such losses. And then, of course, the one thing that always jumps out to me, well, there's two additional things. One is the land use taxation question, and that we specifically say in the comprehensive plan that the Code of Virginia establishes four special classifications of real estate, agricultural, horticultural, forest use, and open space. But specific to Rappahannock County, we don't recognize open space. And to my mind, this creates open space use in an agriculturally zoned area. I know open space was a hot idea last election cycle, and I don't think people like it. I don't think people want it. I think it has very limited appeal, and the idea of agriculture is that cows don't go to school. That's why we give breaks for land and ag. It lessens the demand on the county by having land and ag. And I think if you're creating a semi-commercial use on agriculturally zoned land, that you will be creating needs for the county. Public safety concerns, additional traffic, you will be creating needs that you, that you can't say exist when that land is an ag. And then, of course, finally, looking through the principles, principle one is encourage agricultural operations and ensure the preservation of productivity, availability, and use of agricultural lands for continued production of agricultural products.
Right.
If that's our first principle in the comprehensive plan, and we left it there when we reviewed the comprehensive plan, how do we reconcile adopting this against discourage expansion of public utilities and other growth-inducing public facilities into agricultural areas to minimize development pressures on those areas. Make land use decisions and plans that approve, that approve conversion of farmland to non-farm use only if overriding public need exists to change that land use. Existing development areas cannot accommodate a proposed new use, or extenuating circumstances can be shown to exist. And I just, I don't believe that we've reconciled this ordinance with what we adopted in the comprehensive plan, and I don't support it.
Well, I mean, if there's no application in front of the Board, how can we say that we have an overriding need for something?
Mr. Curry, did, did, am I correct, and maybe Ms. Summers can clarify if I'm, if I'm not remembering correctly, and I don't think I was in local government then, did Mr. Miller, did he actually file the paperwork for an ordinance amendment?
Yes.
Along these lines? So a property owner with an interest in doing this, which any citizen can do, actually filed a request that the county consider adopting an ordinance amendment? So that fee was paid by an interested property owner?
That's one property owner, so we have an overriding, the county has an overriding interest to basically repurpose agricultural areas for commercial use because one person wants to do it?
Well, I was just responding to your point that if we don't have a permit in front of us, how do we know that there's public or community interest? And I just want...
No, there's a difference between public or community interest, there's an overriding public necessity, and that's not where we're at. We don't have that. We have one person that would like to, I guess, charge people money for hitting golf balls around on their property, and I don't see how that constitutes exactly what the comprehensive plan says and lays out. I mean, we spent a lot of time on that, you yourself worked on that a lot.
Yeah, I would just say, I think Ms. Smith makes good points, and I would just say, first of all, on land use, my understanding is that a property, a zone-ag property that went into this use, the property owner, I believe, would have to pull it out of land use. They could not, they could not benefit from our land use taxation program. It's my understanding, because if you have a driving range, there's no agricultural activity going on. I believe that's the case. And I believe in Sperryville that Mr. Miller did pull it out of land use when he, when he first went this direction. And then, as I, as I stated when I put forward the earlier motion, if you, if you read the ordinance as it came from the Planning Commission, the members of the Planning Commission, I think, agree with you that we want to encourage agricultural productive activity on egg properties, but balancing that with the property rights of the owner. And here, basically, you have an ordinance that would amount to a possible use of an agricultural property that would involve almost zero infrastructure change of that property, as I said, which would then allow to revert back to agricultural use if the property owner decided that they would rather go that direction, how they use their property. And I, and we would only see an application if a, if a person with an ag property decided themselves that they would rather have revenue from golf balls being hit than from growing hay. So I think it's, it's about as, as I said before, minimalist as it can be, and if adopted, it doesn't leave us with a use on egg land that's really that far from pure agricultural use. It's not far at all, actually.
Well, I understand that, and I know in more urbanized areas, they, they would take advantage of open space and the large parcel of land into golf ranges or golf courses, and it could always be converted later back into houses.
Right.
And so I, you know, I understand banking the property, so to speak, but at the same time, our comprehensive plan states, as Ms. Smith read, we're only supposed to be doing it for overriding public necessity, and there is none here. We're only doing it because one landowner sometime in the past, you know, filed an application to change the ordinance that didn't get done at that time. Now, absent that, we're doing it without an application.
When it was filed, there was a lot of concerns over the, you know, nets and infrastructure, and it just wasn't a fit. And I think the Board passed it on, saying if you can make it fit, then it might be appropriate. And certainly, the Board of Supervisors County can allow this use to happen or not by inserting it to the ordinance through, through this process.
I just wonder how often that's going to be the key decision, making process that a property owner wants to do something, and then we make it happen.
Well, I suppose the Board is the deciding factor in that. But what I wanted to say was, I've heard, as speakers have come and talked to the Board, that there's a lot of pressure on your large parcel owners.
Right.
And land use is very helpful to them, land use taxation, but being able to find some way to monetize in some part those large parcels to help them pay their taxes helps keep those large parcels together.
If it pulls it out of land use, it's not helping them.
Well, it might be. Well, it might be. I mean, they have to make a decision that they're going to make more money at the end of the day by allowing golf balls to be hit than bailing hay. And based on conversations earlier today and diesel prices, they might have something to that. But, you know, those are big level decisions that the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors needs to think about on the planning perspective of, does the ability of a landowner, a large landowner, to take a use like this or one of the other uses that's allowed in agricultural or through special exception or special use permit, does it help overall or does it hurt overall to keep those large parcels together? And that's not an easy answer. But I think that ultimately is the big picture deciding point for things like this. There are many other uses allowed in ag.
Yeah.
And do you want to add another one? That's a valid question.
Well, the thing is, now, maybe this particular parcel that may be applied for again in the future, if they took it out of land use a couple of years ago, they only have a couple of years to wait. But I think it's, you know, it's like the six-year magic number that they could be hit with rollback taxes. A 25-acre parcel could conceivably have a $40,000 hole in the budget automatically.
I would caution you not to think about one parcel. This is countywide in all.
I'm just saying, a 25-acre parcel. I didn't say a particular parcel. 25 acres is within the ordinance.
Yeah.
So a 25-acre parcel taken out of land use would automatically create a $40,000 hole in the operating budget.
So that, as you point out, that makes it, if someone's going to do this, they better have their ducks to get, ducks in order. And it might not make sense for very many people.
Not to mention market demand. I mean, I mean, you don't make much money on buckets of golf balls. And I think that it's, we're not going to become, you know, the driving range capital of the commonwealth. Like, I should be the-
All right. This is a roll call vote as well. Mr. Frazier?
Nay.
Ms. Smith?
Nay.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
And I also. All right. The last public hearing for this evening is the budget amendment, FY 2022.
Thank you. The board's aware, Code of Virginia Section 1522517 requires you to hold a budget amendment public hearing anytime supplemental appropriations exceed 1% of the overall adopted budget. You've done that one time earlier this year, I believe, in December. And we've now reached the 1% threshold again, largely essentially due to the $507,000 true-up from the schools. That's done to recognize their actual revenues that they will receive from state and federal government and, to a lesser extent, from private groups. But at the same time, we throw in all the other smaller appropriations that have come to us at a similar time. With that said, this was advertised in the newspapers required by the Code, Reference Code section, and the documents have been available for review at my office. Once you hear from the public, in order to move forward on this, you will have to adopt a resolution to amend the budget and then a resolution to amend the appropriations that you made earlier this year to update them to be consistent with the new budget.
All right. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come up and give us your name and your district.
Tick tock. Good clock of local government.
Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak?
I see Dr. Grimsley here. I assume that's why she came.
I assume. All right. Not seeing any hand in Zoom. I'll close the public hearing and once again, open it to the board.
Madam Chair, if I could address a question to Dr. Grimsley, please.
Sure.
Dr. Grimsley, could you just give us in a nutshell this, the background on the true-up that's really driving this late in the fiscal year amendment?
Certainly. Thank you so much for the opportunity to address you tonight. The Esser III funds that came in, which was a large amount, came through later as a competitive grant through the American Mesquite Plan. So Rappahannock did go ahead and apply for those, some of it to address learning loss, after-school programming and school programming. So that was not initially in the budget, nor was it in the forefront of our minds as we were applying for other community play money. So that's that part. The true-ups were actualized funding sources through revenue. And some areas were a little bit less than we had anticipated, so we shored those up as well. And those are all on our budget calculation tool for state revenue. So that's what you see in that category. Final section are other grants that we had applied for throughout the year after the budget had already been approved and after our appropriation in the fall.
So with all these, with the Esser funds, Esser III funds being used and the PATH grants that are identified here, technically, they can't overspend their appropriation. So while I think the board was aware all this was going on, we need to true-up that appropriation.
I see.
And then, at the end of the day, hopefully, less money from the county will actually get you.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks for the explanation.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll just move this along for discussion. And I will put forward a motion to adopt the resolution presented in our meeting packet to approve the amended 2022 fiscal year budget.
A motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second discussion? Hearing, no discussion? Okay, so we need the resolution.
It's a roll call vote.
Yeah.
And this is, again, the first of two resolutions. This is just adopting the amended fiscal year 2022 budget.
All right. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
And I also.
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion to adopt the resolution presented in our board packet to approve the amended fiscal year 2022 appropriations.
I'll second.
All right. A motion and a second discussion? Hearing, none. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
And I also.
Thank you, Dr. Grimsley.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're into public comment for the evening. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment? Please come up and give us your name and district.
I'm Maureen Harris, and I live in the Piedmont District. I want to first thank you for your hard work on this board. I know you spend many hours working on it and for very little financial compensation. I hope it's a labor of love. So thank you very much. I wanted to inform you that I have gone, over the past year, I've gone into the Wikipedia and examined the pages, the entries in Wikipedia that relate to the county, and updated and enhanced five of them. Particularly, Rappahannock County itself was very thin, very short, and very out of date. And so I added information on the history of the county, added information on the economy, on land use, on agriculture and farming, on education, and some other topics, drawing on lots of reliable published sources, one of which was the comprehensive plan, which drew on reliable published sources. So then, Sperryville, Amosville, and the town of Washington have their own entries in Wikipedia. So I went into each of those also and just modified them to bring them more up to date and to enhance the content of those entries also. So, but, so I just wanted to let you know that I had done that. But my major reason for being here this evening is to encourage you to consider favorably Mr. Akre's proposal for Brush River Two and also his proposal to enact a boundary change. I think the comprehensive plan that you passed several months ago really encourages or limits or restricts whatever verb you want to choose development in and around the villages. So in my mind, this is a perfect example of how a development can be restricted or located right next to one of our villages. This happens to be the town village, but it's still considered to be one of the villages. I agree with the comprehensive plan in that regard to focus development and enhancement of activities clustered around the villages. I think that's a very good aspect of the comprehensive plan. When I was doing work on the history of the town of Washington, I found that in 1850, there was a stream that ran from about the back of the offices for Trinity Church. And it ran down and through what is now the pond and through what is now the post office. And right around the area of the post office, there was a tannery. This was a very major stream, and tanneries need running water. And so they use the stream in their enterprise for tanning leather. Well, this stream hasn't gone away. It's still there. It's partly blocked by the pond now, but it ekes out. And so you've got now, instead of a flowing stream, you've now got a wetland after downhill from the post office. So there will never be any development on that piece of property because it's a wetland. You can't put in a well and a septic system on a wetland. So Mr. Akre has requested that you, that you permit him to move that four acres into the town, to the town's jurisdiction, so he can take advantage of the septic system and the water supply that the town offers. And as he's, the town has stated to you quite clearly that for legal reasons, they cannot provide septic and water to someone who is not within the boundaries of the town. So for all of these reasons, I really encourage you to look favorably on Mr. Akre's request.
Thank you.
Ms. Harris, I'm most excited that you solved a mystery because I read the Rappahannock County Wikipedia stuff recently, and I thought, who the heck wrote this? It's perfectly written, comprehensive, no errors. There's budget information in there. It's unbelievable. And I've been asking around, hey, do you know who's been doing this? Now I know. So thank you. Thank you for all the time you put into that. And I'll look at the other ones, too.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, me.
Hi. Sheila Gressinger, Hampton District. I wasn't going to say anything tonight, and then a subject came up about the driving range in the comprehensive plan. One of the things about the comprehensive plan is that it's not a document cast in stone. It's up for review every five years, and you can put amendments to it. So part of the thing that I wanted to say about the driving range, though, things facing our country now are mental health issues. And what could be nicer than to have a place where you can go and hit golf balls and sort of get rid of some of your anxiety or whatever? So as far as it being an overriding need, one size doesn't fit all. But I think it's answering a need for some people who'd like to get out in the open and play golf. And so I think the whole thing is, would be welcome here, and I think it's going pretty well. So there are opportunities for change to occur, and I think this might be a beneficial one.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, members. Dick Deacon's Stonewall Hall of Fame District, formerly of the Hampton District. We'll get into that a little later. This morning, at the two o'clock session, what seemed to be a little innocuous item, agenda item, sort of perked my interest. And it was about this footpath in Little Washington, or near the courthouse area. And my concern, I know it's not a question and answer thing, but you can answer this really quickly for me. Who owns the property that our memorial is on, county or town?
Out here.
Yes.
The county.
The memorial to honor the Confederates that, in the War of Northern Aggression.
Yeah, I call it-
War between the states, whatever you want to call it.
It's county property.
It's county property. Okay.
Yeah.
So I also want to find out, it seemed to me like that is possible, that there's a possibility of relocating that? I know it's not a question and answer, but it's something to think about. But at least that's the way I interpreted that item number, which was G1.
Just to be clear, there's a different monument in the drawings. That wasn't that monument. It was a totally-
A little obelisk.
That's the third-
Yeah, it's an obelisk for the town.
Gotcha.
Yeah, that's what that was about.
Gotcha. That's the third rail of the county. So thank you for clarifying that. I don't know when the July BOS meeting is. Is it a good possibility I won't be in town? I'm not going to belabor this. I've written to the board. I've spoken publicly against the boundary adjustment in opposition to this wonderful lady's explanation. I think it'll change the nature of Rappahannock considerably. The Royal Gem will not apply anymore. Now, this story just came up to me today, but it's an issue that goes back. And first, I'm going to thank Mr. Whitson for his efforts in trying to resolve this problem. And it involves the, everybody calls it the Rock Mill Swimming Hole. Now, I don't know if I've spoken about this in public, but I sure as hell have written enough information to the board, previous board and your board. So now it's going to get real public. It's referred to as a swimming hole. It is not the swimming hole. Mr. Edward Pauly, and probably, Mr. Frazier might know Mr. Edward Pauly, me, God, will not. Famous actor, kind of a second-grade actor, but in all the movies we ever watched as young men, he was always a secondary character, and he was probably one of the greatest treasures of Rappahannock County. He had 112 acres. I was the first of the subdivision of his 112 acres after Mrs. Pauly. By the time Mrs. Pauly, who was also a Broadway actor, a Ziegfeld Folly gal, the whole routine, he gifted a five-acre parcel to the Mount Lebanon Baptist Church to continue the 200-plus-year tradition of baptisms. This is not, this has become the ocean city of Virginia. And I'd like to incorporate in my comments a letter that I wrote, that Mr. Whitson wrote to me on June 4, 2020, copied to Mr. Curry, and all the things that were attempting, he was going to attempt to do. This, right now, as it exists, is an unsolvable problem. It's a solvable problem, but it can't be maintained. You're going to need 24/7, as soon as the sheriff leaves, as soon as the fish cop leaves, as soon as the church leaves with their deacons. I'm D-E-A-K-I-N-S, not deacons, but the problem exists. I called Mr. Whitson on Memorial Day as I drove by. I do buy, I make a U-turn because I don't want to turn in my neighbors. Out of respect to my neighbor, I don't turn in their driveway. I go down, turn around. We've got people in the middle of the river with their trucks and cars washing. And I'm about to drop the nuclear bomb and call DEQ. That might solve the problem. Some people say, well, a couple of drops- Some people say, well, a couple drops of oil in the Thornton River, what's that going to be? Well, DEQ might take it a little differently. When I started getting in action in 2020, thank God that I was not on site. My wife and three of our grandchildren, we have grandchildren now that are six to nine, so that would have put them between three and six, and we're in the woods. They came upon a trespasser and another one, two trespassers. As they turned, the oldest one said, "Meemaw, that man's got a gun." So, Mr. Goff, I can tell you right now, it's a good thing I wasn't there. That's a threat to my family, and my wife called him down. They left all the way across our property, all the way down. We've got a pretty good hunk of Thornton River. To get to that hunk of Thornton River, you've got to walk from that swimming hole. And the comment that this man made to my wife was, the swimming hole was too busy. They wanted to come back up this way. That's the first and last time that will happen. If it happens again, I will sue the county, I will sue the church, and I will sue each one of you individually. That is a threat to my family, and I will not tolerate it. What you need to do there, I don't want to be the Grinch that stole Christmas because by God, when it gets hot, I like to jump in the river, too. The climate has changed since 1983. The political and social climate that exists right now did not exist when Mr. Pauly would have welcomed everybody in the world into that spot, not now. We've got gang members that have been down there. We've got noise. Go down there now, you'll find trash that wasn't there yesterday, because every day it happens. Sometimes it's 15 cars. So on Memorial Day, half a dozen cars, washing cars in the road, in the river. On the other side of that is not the church property, the spillway, where for runoff to the Thornton River, which floods continually. Two guys fishing. Well, I'm a fisherman. I'm not going to sit there and do it. I was ticked off. I asked them whether, you know, did they own that property? And they said, no, but we have permission slips from the church. Well, I don't know if you had permission slips for it. All you have to do is read the sign that says you have to have a permission slip. So he could have slicked me on it because I was headed to another function. But the fact is, he said, he basically couldn't fish there because it was too many people in the swimming hole, what he called the swimming hole. So he's now on private property and trespassing. Goes across, there's no trespassing sign, and there's a vehicle parked in the spillway. So here's how you solve the problem. You get boulders, and you block access to those cars, and you enforce the parking. Or if you don't do boulders, and boulders aren't that expensive, close them up so it can't drive a car through there, or take an auger and go down five or six or seven feet till you get some sort of foundation and put a cable across here. Something has to be done. Mr. Whitson, I appreciate your effort, I truly do. It's not going to solve the problem. The problem needs to be solved. There's this hope and pray that we don't have it, because what it is, the legal term is attractive nuisance, and you've got it. And they'll walk out, and the house, Mr., I think his name is Scott, he's a dentist, owns Mr. Pauly's old house that they fled from the flood, doesn't occupy it, and goes up there and sits on his porch. Watch, that's so vulnerable. I mean, that's a shiny white object in the middle of all this thing. Watch if things start getting tagged. I'm going to predict this. Watch vandalism. It hasn't happened yet, but law of averages says it will. So sorry to go on a spiel. The last thing is, I feel like I'm watching an old episode of Survivor, and I've said this before. It's a continual three-to-two vote every single issue. The other side is never listened to. Three-to-two, three-to-two. Mix it up a little bit. Go on the other side. Change that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I don't think there's anybody else in the courtroom. Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak during public comment? Looks like no, so we'll close public comment period.
Chair, can we take a two-minute break?
Sure.
Or a three-minute break?
I'll give you four.
Okay. Thanks.
Good. All right. Thank you very much. We are now moving into old business town boundary line change request.
This matter's been before the board a number of times. It's been moving forward, I'll say deliberately, if not gradually. At your last meeting, there was discussions about the fact that a boundary line agreement will have to be developed, and Mr. Akre was before he even discussed some of the things that he thought might be acceptable and how the project can move forward. Mr. Goff and I were tasked to engage the town attorney and Mr. Akre's attorney. There were a few different meetings to that end, and Mr. Foot has prepared an updated draft agreement for the body to review and consider, as I think was noted earlier in the meeting. That just came today, and it was uploaded today. I would try to get out in front of this to say, I don't know that anybody expects the board to say, yes, that's the agreement, and vote for it. You can't, anyway. The process, as we've talked about before, requires a public hearing, and by both the county and the town, on the same agreement. And so there has to be, first, an agreement that the board can find acceptable, and that has to be consistent with an agreement that the town council finds acceptable. And lastly, because this agreement is so detailed, or proposed agreement is so detailed with respect to the owner, truly, the owner needs to find it acceptable. So you have three different parties that have to be on the same page for this process to move forward. And so you have a draft, and I think it has a lot of what the board has discussed before as things that you thought would be important to be in an agreement relative to zoning, relative to funds, relative to the existing deed restrictions on the county buildings. And staff will need direction on how to work with the other legal counsel to move this forward, if that's the board's will, things that you think maybe were missed. And then process. There was a previous discussion of a joint meeting with town council, and I think we've kind of penciled that in for July 18th. That's on my calendar. I'm not sure how we drove to that date, but at some point, as I noted, the agreements need to align between the two bodies and with the owner, and we're at the next step. It's unfortunate that you just received this this morning, probably weren't able to review it in great detail, but you have an opportunity now. I can put it on the screen, and the group can read through it altogether if you'd like.
This is too much to try and do that tonight.
What? Do you want to? No.
It's too much to try and read tonight and digest. But I don't see anything in here about waiving ARB on the property that the county is considering building a new courthouse on. I thought we had discussed that, but I don't see anything addressed here in this draft document.
Mr. Whitson, I don't know if you want to address or Mr. Goff or myself.
Yeah, I just thought maybe, and Mr. Fraser already raises a specific point, something that might not be embedded in the draft agreement. I have reviewed it as quickly as I was able, eating dinner, and I think it would be useful, since Mr. Goff was directly involved in deliberations with Mr. Foot and Mr. Crim, if he would at least get to walk us through the bones of the agreement so that we can then, I think, systematically identify whether it reflects those provisions that each of us had wanted included in the draft.
Sure. I did meet with Mr. Curry and Mr. Foot. Very nice meeting. I previously met with Mr. Bennett, and we discussed a lot of the stuff that's in here. I subsequently met by phone with Mr. Crim and got some things straight. I think that this agreement reflects what all we've discussed, acceptable, what Mr. Fraser just brought up, waiver of ARB, and then the other was the historic facade lot for the front of the courthouse that doesn't appear in this agreement. But basically, I read it pretty closely, although I did just get it today, too, in this form, and the only thing I would point out to begin with is the recitals are, one, we need to be a little bit more specific, and Mr. Curry and I agree, we need to have a partial description and a deed book reference, but that's just a technical thing. Then it goes through, and it defines everything rather simply and effectively as to what the boundary line adjustment is and the adjusted property. A lot of this stuff is something off the top of the plan, according to Page 2 or 13. And then the meat of it is in the Section 2, Pages 3 to 13, the use and development of the property. And what this does is that it binds the town not to allow a certain, but only certain, by right and special exception or special use permit uses that could be done if the parcel remained under general commercial within the purview of the county's zone ordinance. So it specifies in some detail everything that we thought that the county wanted, as far as this board wanted, as the limitations of the use, even though it's in the town's planned use development zone. It would otherwise be limited to those things specifically enumerated on Pages 3 and 4 of 13, respectively. Then it goes into what originally was in the first agreement, the release of the restrictive covenants on the county buildings. There's certain, when that swap and sale was negotiated some 20 years ago, there were restrictive covenants placed on both sets of properties, which the parties by this agreement agreed to release each other from. That is, no news, that's all the same. See, moving forward onto Page 9 of 13, they agree that the town and the county will split any revenues that are generated from meals and lodging taxes on this, what was formerly the county parcel, and that's a 50-50 split. They also are agreeing that the public sewer would be extended to the Washington Company One Volunteer Fire Department. Could be. Could be. Could be if they want to pay for it, if the company wants to pay for it. They're not saying they're going to pay for that, just to be clear, just that they would allow it to happen upon, you know, the infrastructure being provided by the fire company. Also, there is a paragraph 6 on Page 9 of 13. They are agreeing to a moratorium on future boundary line adjustments with some exceptions, and also a blank space for the number of years that that would exist. They would allow for boundary line adjustments to incorporate into the town parcels lying both in both jurisdictions, for failing septic systems, and because of failing well or septic systems. So there could be adjoining parcels that are partly in the town and the county that would benefit from that.
Is that the, so are you saying that the exception to a moratorium, whatever number of years we would ascribe to such moratorium on boundary line adjustments? The exception would be defined solely by a need stemming from a failed well or septic system?
Of a parcel that lies partially in both jurisdictions. So that would be accepted.
Oh, the or.
Situation would be accepted from the moratorium.
Okay. So you're saying no, the way it's crafted currently, it's no pure expansion of the town to encapsulate entirely in the county parcel.
There's some ors in there that...
That I'm, that's where I'm struggling.
...be parsed out a little bit.
Okay, that's fine. I don't want to...
Recluded. Okay. Lying partially in both jurisdictions. So they're saying they're not slamming the...
Or on motion either. Either per, so this is, I don't know if the town may not even...
Yeah.
...do this before today, because we haven't read it before today, so they may not find any of this acceptable. I don't know.
But I think that paragraph 6, there might be a misuse of the word or, but we can dive into that.
There at the bottom, the or looks like it could be a property that's not actually partially imposed.
Yeah. Which is what I was, yeah.
At the end of the day, it has to be acceptable to both bodies in order to stay in and...
Right.
And I can imagine the property owner may not have much interest in this as long as it satisfies the town and the county, because it's something else's property.
So the, or, item 6 on Page 9 definitely are...
Page 9.
Item 6.
Item 6 on Page 9.
The problematic part you referred to is the last sentence.
Yeah, I just, I think someone needs to take a close look at that.
Or for properties that require annexation in order to provide town water and/or sewer because of failing the land or septic system.
Yeah.
Or for properties, and you think that that's too broad.
I just want to make sure that this is written, it's been presented as intended because I'm not sure.
So I'm going to put a question mark.
Yeah.
And I'm going to ask Mr. Foot to say, what is intended?
Well, I think more importantly, what is, is there a board perspective on future annexation? And does that vary based on the location of that annexation around the town?
Right.
Whether a lot is partially in the town or not, and whether there's a failing well and septic or not. And so if there are different scenarios in which this board would find a boundary line adjustment acceptable, then it would be okay to carve them out of a moratorium.
Well, yeah.
Perhaps annexation is too strong a word.
Well, I'm sorry. Yeah, it is definitely too...
Well, one question I wondered was, if there is a lot that's partially in the town and partially in the county, wouldn't that lot be by the, by right allowed to connect to the town water system anyway?
Well, that's the lot that we are talking about right now, so...
It's unclear.
I don't understand what that's driving at, so, but anyway, that's what it says. And yes, it is rather broad at the end. So, okay, moving on.
Yeah, my intent, my intent on a moratorium period was just to have a cooling-off period because of concerns from people that, you know, this is a significant, I'll just call it development, significant development that, you know, people concerned about, you know, snowball effect, et cetera. So in simple form, it was just a cooling-off period intent with this paragraph, and now I feel like it's perhaps a little overwrought in its wording and perhaps not as direct as it could be. So I think it's worth just chewing on that and making sure that we're headed in the right direction. But I'll look at it carefully because I was the one who suggested inserting the moratorium in the first place.
Sure. Now, there was one other section that I just skipped over.
We were at the bottom, Page 9.
Yeah, I think I may have skipped over another important part about number of dwellings. That was another concern that was raised by this board, and I'm skipping back to Page 3 of 13, Section 2B, Lilai 1, right in the middle of the page, dwellings. Provided, however, that a number may construct not more than, and there's a blank spot, number of dwelling units on the adjusted property after blank years.
So this is in the list of uses that are acceptable. Dwellings are acceptable, however, a limited number of dwellings after a specified number of years.
Could, Mr. Goff, you're better than me at sort of reading ordinance language. The way, I've read this now four times this afternoon. I'm struggling with the construction of 2A, B, 1, and then the enumerated items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 under B1, and I feel like something might be stated opposite than, as it should be. So it says, take for example, B, the following uses shall be prohibited at Rush River Commons. Okay? And then it goes to 1, then it says, no use permitted by right, by special permit, or by special exception in the Rappahannock County zoning ordinance, in the commercial general zoning district, except for those uses listed here. So it says, these uses shall be prohibited, and then it goes to, these uses shall not be prohibited. Am I reading that correctly?
The construction is interesting, that it says, the following uses are prohibited. Everything's prohibited. Except... Everything's prohibited, except.
Yeah.
And then C says the following uses shall be permitted, so it.
Well, I think the way I might suggest it is that notwithstanding any, any, any use by right, special permit or special use permit, under commercial general zoning of the county ordinance, the following are, are.
Allowed, yeah. And so if the.
That's how I would phrase it.
If the board is of a mind to think that this listing of uses is an appropriate listing of uses, the lawyers can make the words.
Yeah.
Clear to the layperson.
Well, I just wanna make sure that I understand correctly that one through six are contemplated as allowed uses.
So one through six are allowed, and then room numeral, one through whatever.
It's a section C, it says uses, now that doesn't mean buildings, okay? So uses, he uses, specifically uses the word uses, conferences, community gathering, library, co-working, and that's defined, maker spaces also defined, outdoor amphitheater, general retail, and then residential units subject to the provisions of paragraph two B, Lilai, one and above. And it says also two, this is the key, that the, an owner or developer of the adjusted property shall not seek, which is interesting because they're not signed into the disagreement. And when we first were discussing this, I had floated the idea that the owner could be a party intervenor and be bound by the court's order upon further review and research of that question. I do not think that that's possible. Mr. Krim agrees with me on that, that the way they, General Assembly did the adjust, the boundary adjustment agreement, it's only between the two governing bodies, and the owner does not have a right unless they object, then they can intervene. But if you read that standing next to the general intervention statute in the, in the Code of Virginia for civil procedure, it's quite clear that the General Assembly intended to abrogate the terms of the general intervene or statute, and instead specifically prescribed who could intervene in a case such as this, and that's only the agreed landowner who objects to the boundary adjustment.
Which is why it's important for this agreement to say, the town shall not approve.
And then, yeah, so the first part of D, an owner or developer of the adjusted property shall not seek is void on its own terms, so that has nothing to do with anything.
All right, so that has to be cleaned up, and then.
They can say it just for, just to set up the sentence, but.
But the town shall not approve uses of the adjusted property that are not otherwise permitted here, and that does have teeth.
And so.
Go ahead.
Going back to the enumerated allowed uses, I would just say that that construct, the, the sub numbers and room numerals, et cetera, should just be stated more plainly, mostly for the public's benefit, because if we create confusion, then people will say, well, I heard that those aren't allowed. I mean, the way I read it right now, and again, I've read it three or four times, I, I get it, but it's not, the average person would not be able to sort out what's allowed and disallowed. I wonder if I could just speak to Mr. Akry or Ms. Dietl, since they're here, to see on this, on two A, I'm sorry, two B, again, I believe these are, would be contemplated allowed uses. I'd taken the earlier position that no, no residential dwelling units could be constructed on the corner, and this language is in here suggesting that at some point in time dwellings could be constructed there, and I was just curious if you have any specific idea about timing or number of units, because this departs from kind of the absolute moratorium. My question is, yeah, so on, on page three, two B, two B, one, two B I one, dwellings are prohibited, provided however that a developer may construct not more than.
The dwellings are, are allowed, provided.
Okay, right, and that's why this needs to be cleared. Okay, dwellings are allowed, provided, well, then the however doesn't work, but basically it says that a developer may construct not more than blank dwelling units on the adjusted property after blank years. Do you have any, any thoughts that would fill in those blanks?
Come speak at the mic.
I just, I just wonder if, you don't, it, it, okay, but it's, it's basically, it's, it's a response to the earlier idea of an absolute moratorium. Okay, that's, that's fine.
Can I make a suggestion? It seems like we're trying to work through this tonight, but we just got these letters this morning.
Yeah.
And I feel like on something like this, the most important ingredient is not in the room, and that is time for the public to get to review these documents and tell us what they think about them. So while I appreciate that we're trying to do a deep dive tonight, I don't think it's very well advised, and, I mean, I've read it through, I get the gist of it, I'm glad there's some revenue sharing. I think that there should maybe be talk about revenue sharing for any other properties that may be brought in as a result of this deal. Mr. Frazier brought up the ARB concerns, which we also discussed previously, that no other property should fall under ARB purview as a result, as a result of this adjustment, and that the county buildings should come out of there. I mean, I think there's some things to hit, but I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair to the public, and I don't think it's fair to us to try to digest it tonight, and I'm not sure it's fair to the applicant, the town, or the property owner, Mr. Akry either.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to do a deep dive, I was, I was hoping for a high level overview. My questions are definitely high level, I just, since we have it, it's an agenda item, that was my intent. I agree with you, I mean, we can't, we can't work out all the details tonight. I don't, I don't know if there's, we're meeting on the twenty ninth, is that correct currently?
That's a definite possibility.
On the Berkeley Group thing, so could we, I think we've identified a few areas that should be cleaned up just from a, a construction standpoint.
Can I ask them that there'd just be a consent that I continue to try to clean that up and answer some of these questions through the attorney?
Yeah, and then let's work, I mean, to Ms. Smith's point, let's dive into it at our already scheduled work, or I believe it's scheduled, right?
It's tentatively scheduled.
Not noticed.
We may have a, we may have a couple of board members or requiring that to be changed.
I mean, I'm forgetful, but I don't remember setting a date of.
It wasn't said.
Yeah.
It was, it was tentatively set with the consultant, and then we haven't really got, doesn't sound like we have, all board members can be there, so.
I, I would just also worry about doing a Berkeley Group review.
I think there's too much.
Plus this in one night, I suspect that we would have to come in our pajamas, and that's not a good look. So I think that we'll probably need to have separate meetings on these, and, and really for everybody's sanity, I think that's a good idea.
How much, how much time do we need to notice a, a work session on this?
Three days.
Three days, so how much time do you need, or just to do a little?
Well, I, I don't think there's a whole lot, I think Mr. Curry and I could probably knock this out in about two or three hours, between the two of us come up with a, you know, marked up version and send it to Mr. Foot, who is very responsive usually, and Mr. Krim also.
Great.
I think they would work a little quickly, because I know how important it is to the town and Mr. Akry.
Yep. How about Monday, Monday, the, Monday, the twentieth?
That's the scheduled other group meeting, but we don't have anything new to discuss at this point, as far as I know, so we could replace that meeting with.
Okay, I'll put forward a motion that we schedule and advertise a work session.
Do you just wanna continue this meeting when you're done to that date?
If you prefer to go that route, then we can.
Just for, for clarity, you'll be doing that meeting, which is perfectly okay.
Yeah, we'll need Mr. Goff there. Are you available on the twentieth?
What day of the week is that?
Monday.
Monday.
And I see, well, let's see, is the following Tuesday, the third Tuesday of the month?
That, that might happen to be a state holiday now.
It is going to be Juneteenth.
And I, and I don't know my schedule for the rest of the month at this point, I'll have a better idea after tomorrow evening.
At what time does this meet?
Six.
Six, five thirty. I mean, I think we've already, we've already gotten a lot done actually tonight, incidentally, so. I mean, we'll come in prepared.
I think I've got a rather vicious docket the next day, if it's the third Tuesday in the month, but yeah, I'll make it happen.
So what did we decide? We can meet on Juneteenth? That's okay.
But you were already going to.
Oh, that's right, on the other body, yeah.
Broadband Authority was going to meet, I'm not sure there's anything to meet about.
The twenty first is the third Tuesday.
Okay, and what time's the broadband meet, five thirty?
Five thirty.
So, and if we, even if we still convene, we wouldn't have a whole lot to discuss at that point, right, so.
I don't see any reason to convene.
Okay, all right. So let's just, why don't we just.
Too soon, nothing's changed.
You'd have to ask them.
All right, so let's just set this for six PM on the twentieth, but that'll, is, this is not our last agenda item, and we shouldn't make a decision to.
That's right.
Continue until we get to the end of the agenda, but if that's the way you wanna go, we'll do it that way. That way you don't have to advertise, right?
Is that, I'll have the FOIA notice it, but it's less paperwork.
Okay.
Is, is that doable for Mr. Goff?
Yeah, you already.
I'll, I'll make it happen.
And we'll have a, are we sure we'll have a quarrel?
On the twentieth?
On the twentieth, yeah.
Yeah, I'll be here.
Second day.
Okay.
Well, if only two of them show up, I'm gonna leave.
You should tell us a story about that sometime.
Yes.
Mr. Kreischer would want me to do that.
I'll be celebrating my wife's birthday on the middle fork of the Salmon River.
Good for you.
All right.
But you, or I think it's clear, kind of the sticky areas that just need to be cleaned up, really appreciate your work, and Mr. Krim and Mr. Foot, so.
Hang on one second.
Yeah.
Mr. Frazier, waiver of the architectural review board on.
The, the property behind here.
So we, I would refer to it by this parcel number, with the parcel of the four acres that we have.
I think so, yes, sir. As far as I'm concerned, they, they don't have ARB coverage on this part.
Just that four acres.
Yes, sir.
Well, he, his previous contentions, it didn't apply to the courthouse, but we don't believe that that's accurate based on legal review, so.
Without any, I, I think we'd, we'd probably, that four acres.
That four acres.
But not this acreage.
And then.
Well, I, I don't think that it applies here anyway.
So.
If, if we can legally do that, who would want all of our acreage?
All, all county property.
If it's legal.
And then, did you want?
I'm sure it's legal, they can waive anything they want to.
Didn't quite agree with you, right, so what, what about the, the historic facade lot? That had been contemplated as that they were sure that the half acre would be, you know, subdivided off of what we currently have.
The one that you were talking about sometime in the, in the past, yeah, that definitely would have to be out from under that.
Would you want that in, is what I'm saying?
Why don't you draft an exemplable paragraph of how that would read, and then they can vote it up or down?
Okay.
Okay. And then, or I'll, just to help on, sort of, that, that tricky phrasing on, at the top of page three, I'll take a crack at that, and then also on page nine, item six, I'll take a crack at that, because I, I sort of, I was the origin of that idea.
So just for clarity, that's the moratorium on future.
Boundary line adjustments.
For a certain period of time.
Yeah, correct. And then the other is making more clear and plain language what is allowed and not allowed under the agreement in terms of uses.
Now, were there any other questions? So the rest of it's all about the enforcement, which is pretty standard stuff, and it allows for earnings fees or whoever wins, if there's some sort of, you know, brew ah-ha down the road.
Right.
It's just boilerplate stuff, right?
Was that?
That's what you would refer to as boilerplate stuff.
Out of the, it's pretty, kind of boilerplate, but yeah, close enough.
Yeah, but the removal of covenants and meals and lodging, tax revenue sharing, Company One, all that stuff is exactly as I envisioned it, so that's good news.
And so the meals and lodging tax is related only to the, what is now gonna be that four acre.
Right.
Not the fifty percent of the whole town's, right, just that.
Well, that would be, that would be preferable.
Right.
Well, I, I do.
We talked about that.
I, I do think that begs the question, and this came up when the development of the old mill site was talked about a couple of years ago, that there was luxury accommodations to be in, build at that old mill site, but that could only happen if this annexation went through. And so if there are future developments like that, that are producing a lot of revenue, should we see some of that too?
And as this is written, that would be subject to paragraph six, possibly, and it would also be subject to whatever BLA is developed at that time.
Right.
Six is the one that would forestall that future BLA.
The moratorium phrasing on future boundary line adjustments, so we wouldn't even see anything probably there for whatever period of time we in the town might agree on for a moratorium period.
Well, I guess I'm asking, is, are you saying, Ms. Smith, that, that any future boundary line adjustment that occurs would also automatically have a built-in revenue sharing clause in it?
In principle, right, I mean.
I, I don't know if it's something we can build in, but I, if there's a way to make sure that any adjustments going forward, if there's, if there's anything that would happen as a result of this, that would realize revenue, additional revenue to the town, that we would also receive a portion of that, I think we have to really be mindful of that. And, and protect our taxpayers as much as we can.
Totally agree.
But can we just ask one question of you there, because it, wouldn't that be more appropriate to deal with in that boundary line adjustment agreement rather than this one?
Well, and that's, that's what I think, I just wanna make sure there's nothing, that it's not permeable, that there's nothing that's gonna get through and start generating revenue that we would miss out on. And I don't know if there's any scenarios where that would happen, but I just wanted to mention it, because I, I know that there have been additional development, revenue generating developments contemplated, and, and it may require another boundary adjustment, it may, it may not.
There's two ways to do it, boundary adjustment agreement for annexation, which then also involves the commission of, and I just don't see that happening.
Well, I, I guess, I guess the scenario would be, and bear with me, is if, if you have to be able to deliver water and sewer to that property, if there was another property perhaps that was, that could get water and sewer delivered and be developed commercially without going through those processes, and I'm not sure that there are or that that applies to those parcels, but that's just something I wanted to mention, so that, you know, something doesn't slip through that, that then we lose out.
I think the town's position is that their financing instruments will not allow the extension of the septic system beyond the geographic fabric of the town. Why they say it's possible with the little Washington's Fire Hall, I don't know, but they claim through their former attorney that it was a, a instrument, a financing instrument for the bonds that financed the.
Right.
The, the septic system, I mean, sources.
Town hasn't necessarily agreed to any of this yet.
No, town hasn't, and we, we haven't heard anything from town.
Yeah.
I mean, other than Mr. Krim briefly discussing the footpath thing, I have not discussed in detail this with their attorney.
But Ms. Smith, I would agree with you that if someone, if after whatever moratorium period we in the town might agree upon for future, future boundary line adjustments, let's say the mill property after that period, the owner came in and said, hey, I wanna be in the town, of course, we would enter into a similar revenue sharing agreement, I think this is a great model for that. So I think that would be handled in a standalone agreement on a different request.
And if by some way this allowed public water to sort of leapfrog to the next parcel.
Exactly what I was thinking.
And there wasn't a BLA.
Yes.
You're getting a hundred percent, so.
Wow.
We don't need to split it then.
Um, I know that, Mr. Curry and Mr. Goff, you said that the opening paragraph under recitals are one.
Yeah.
You gotta clean something up, I just wanna, I don't, yeah, the five point eight, zero, zero, five acres situated in the county is not correct.
That is incorrect.
Yeah, it's, it's three nine.
Okay, so you, you already saw that.
Three nine five, two, three, yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right, I just want to make sure that's part of your revisions to R dash one.
Yeah, and that's where, um, the parcel will be identified, debooked.
Okay.
And then I would just say, under the permitted uses, it says community gathering spaces for public and private purposes, including without limitation meetings of the governing bodies of the town and county. Uh, I just want to say for the record that I think county business should be done on county property.
Yes.
And I think it's a very kind offer, I think we should take it out of this document because I, I just, I have a very strong conviction that when you hold a meeting, a government meeting, it should be on neutral territory, and that means county buildings. It means here, it means the schools, it may mean a fire hall on occasion, but I don't think it should happen on property that's been developed by one interest or another that would encourage or deter attendance by different people in the community, should be held on neutral territory. And it's a very kind offer, but I think we ought to take it out.
So, what is this sense of the board, do you want me to ask him to remove that? What is the sense of the board on that?
We, I mean, uh, Ms. Smith raised the point, so I think we can dive into that on the twentieth when we meet. I get her point.
The board is completely in control where you meet, when you meet, um, that provides latitude that some future board may have different feeling for, but it's going to be bound up in the courts.
Fair point.
But I can imagine that, God forbid, I don't know what, this old wire trap burrows down in the house.
At least go with striking lightning strikers or something.
And if you need a place to meet, uh, when the, the new courthouse hasn't been built, and this one can't be used, uh, and let's say, uh, there's a, you know, problem with the scheduling of the school, so it might be kind of cool just to leave it hanging out there just as a, a potential.
As a backstop.
I, I appreciate the sentiment, but I used to work for a church, and I have very strong feelings about holding meetings on neutral territory.
So, what I'll do is I'll italicize it and, and put that in there as a highlight so that the people can discuss it. As part of our.
Where did flea market come from?
Yeah, I don't know.
It just seems so out of the.
That's why, that's what threw me off, and I was confused, I thought we were talking about not allowed uses. Maybe, uh, we can find out.
Yep. All right. Can we move on to?
Yep, so, uh, the twentieth at six P M. is the plan, and we'll just, someone will make a motion to continue this meeting till that time and date certain, hopefully, okay?
Yep. Supplemental appropriations.
Uh, yes, these two very small supplemental appropriations came in, uh, after I prepared the budget amendment items. Quite frankly, neither of them.
Thank you.
Probably are necessary because the sheriff is not going to overspend her budget, uh, but she requested them, and I think it'd be appropriate to, uh, adopt them and appropriate these additional grant dollars into, uh, the budget.
So, um, just administratively, why was this not?
Timing.
It, that's why it wasn't our consent agenda?
Right, because, um, timing in the meeting, the, the base budget.
Oh, I got it, I understand.
It was that, you know.
Yeah, okay, I got it, great. I'll, I'll put forward a motion that we approve the supplemental appropriations that are presented here.
Have a second?
I'll say.
Second, any discussion? Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair, um, I'm, I'll move that we continue this meeting to six P M. in the Rappahannock County courthouse on Monday, June twentieth, to continue our discussion of the county-town boundary line adjustment request and draft agreement.
Thank you very much.
I'll wait a second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
I don't know if I'm available at this time, I may not be available.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Say.
Thank you.